Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order. If you would stand and recite the pledge with me, please.
Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, a roll call, please.
Alderman Bockelman, absent. Alderman Reese.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Miller.
Present.
Alderman Dickerson.
Here.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
And Alderman Davidson.
Present.
Mayor Bowman.
Present.
Thank you. We have a forum. Welcome. I love to see the council chambers full like this. I want to welcome you to this Board of Aldermen meeting. We have several different celebratory things to do tonight, some proclamations. I'm going to start by asking -- I'm sorry. No. Nathan, is it Nathan?
Yes, Nate.
Nate, thank you.
And Erica.
And then Eva and Kevin to come forward. We're going to start with the proclamation. So Eva and Kevin are both VIBS volunteers, and Kevin is also the chaplain for the police department, and he's also the volunteer coordinator for the VIBS program. Nate and Erica are from Cass-Cannon Psychological Services. And so suicide is a thing that touches all of us, and it profoundly touches these folks. So we wanted to officially make a proclamation because we know that, I believe it's -- it's the entire month of September that is Mental Health Awareness Month and Suicide Prevention Month. So we wanted to honor the thought of that with a proclamation, and I'd like to read that to you. It says, "City of Harrisonville Proclamation. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. The simple goal is to help you to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone, regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the U.S. and the 2nd leading cause of death among people aged 10 to 24. And whereas Harrisonville, Missouri is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Suicide Prevention Services and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Health are on the front lines of the battle that so many still refuse to discuss in public as suicide and mental illness or pain too taboo, a topic to speak on. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we're all silently fighting our own battles. And whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days, months, and years ahead, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture that they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, message, handshake, or hug can go a long way towards helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Judy Bowman, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in the city of Harrisonville." You know, proclamations are to raise awareness about things, and that's why we wanted to make this proclamation this evening, just to remind us all that probably everybody in this room has been touched somehow, some way, by suicide. So reach out to your friends, family. Make it comfortable for them to talk to you. I think that's really -- I shouldn't be saying this. These are the professionals. They should be saying this. But just being there for someone. So thank you for the work that you do. Appreciate you. Here's a copy for you, and we'll do a picture. Kevin, thank you. And I have a copy for you also. So what would you like to do?
Just everybody kind of converge there.
That works.
Yeah, let's do one group photo.
That works.
All right. Pick a camera and look at it. Three, two, one. Thank you.
Give her a round of applause for the -- Okay. It said it was about awareness. So now I would like to do a proclamation about Constitution Week. We have some of the ladies from the Daughters of the American Revolution. If you all would come forward, please. We have Rita -- Rita in the red.
No, Ruth.
Ruth in the red, Barbara in the blue, and Marilyn in the black and white. Did I get that right?
Sue.
Sue. Sue. Ruth and Sue and Marilyn. Got it. All right. This is the proclamation for Constitution Week. Whereas September 17, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, Judy Bowman, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through the 23rd as Constitution Week 2019 and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. So congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will give you this. And I think we'd like to do a picture.
Snap the picture. Just get everybody kind of bunch in there. All right. One, two, three. There we go.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, I'm not going to read this proclamation because it is quite lengthy, and you've already read two proclamations. But we were contacted by Happy Bottoms, which is a diaper bank in Kansas City. Some of you are nodding your heads like you've heard of them. Proclamations are about raising awareness. I was not aware of the need for diapers and the fact that so many families struggle just to be able to afford to pay for diapers. It costs about $125 a month for diapers, and a lot of times children are not changed as frequently as they need to be changed because the family can't afford diapers. So it was good for me to become aware of the fact that Happy Bottoms, based out of Kansas City, works with social agencies to help provide diapers for families that need them. So we're going to send this proclamation to them. Basically, it just says what I've just stated to you, that there are a lot of families that have a lot of need, and here's an organization that helps meet that need. So it's Happy Bottoms. I love the name. They're a diaper bank in Kansas City, and so now we all know about them, so. I'll let you mail back. All right. Before I go back up, we're going to open the floor for public participation. And because we have some honored guests in the room, I'm going to go ahead and ask them to step forward. So most of you remember that this past summer we were honored to have the Moving Wall in Harrisonville. And it was a joint effort with the community, with a lot of civic groups, veteran groups, the city, the chamber, and a lot of others. It was an event that drew some 30,000 people to Harrisonville. And I know I'm a changed woman as a result of experiencing that. So what we have with us this evening is we have some veterans with us, and they have a presentation that they would like to make to the city and to the chamber. So I'm going to ask them to turn it around and show it to you. And this is Jim McGuire. He's the president.
Thank you, Judy. We want to thank the city of Harrisonville, everybody. You were real outstanding. I don't know if you know, but you had people come from as far away as Wyoming, Utah, to come out here for the Moving Wall. There were other people that came down from Kansas City. There were other people that passed through the state of Missouri on vacation, and they made it down here also to see the wall. So as President of Chapter 243 of Vietnam Veterans of America, we wish to present Harrisonville with this picture because you were so generous in having us here. And I understand, Judy, you told the police department to guard that helicopter special.
Yes, I did.
So it's a very special thanks to everybody here in Harrisonville. You people are outstanding down here. I can't say enough about it. The number of veterans that were here, the number of residents that are here in Harrisonville. I think the majority of the people were down here. At this time, I'll turn this over to Arnie. And Arnie, you can explain this picture more detail a little bit.
Yes. I'm Arnie Swift, Vice President of the chapter. And the picture that you see in front of you is kind of unusual. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Run for the Wall. It's a motorcycle event that starts 10 days before Memorial Day in Southern California. This past year was the 31st year. I've done it 21 times. Round trip for me, that's 6,500 miles in 14 days on a motorcycle. In 2006, I took my beautiful Pentax camera that I bought while I was in Vietnam, and I wanted to take some pictures. Okay? We're talking about film now, not digital. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the wall, but these two statues are at least 100 yards apart. The nurse's statue is to the far east side. The three soldiers is to the west side. So what I did, I wanted to try something different. You can't do it digitally, but you could do it with film. I took a double exposure. I took this picture first, walked 100 yards, took the other picture. And then I also did another, did it backwards. Now, there's one problem with film. It was going to be two weeks before I could get it developed, which means if it didn't turn out, it wasn't going to get done. When I got it developed, I about passed out because it's entitled Shadows, and you can actually see through them, the trees behind them, the benches, just like they're ghost statues. And it was so good, I had it copy-located. But it's been a blessing to me, and we really wanted to bless the city of Harrisonville with it tonight. So thank you very much.
Well, on behalf of the city and the Board of Aldermen, I just want to tell you how much this means to us. It's a wonderful gift, and we will cherish it for many, many years to come. I want to acknowledge a couple of other people that are up here with me. If you were at the Moving Wall celebration, you know the tall guy in the light blue shirt with the Vietnam veteran cap. He was your master of ceremonies, and he was the one who sang the Lee Greenwood song that really brought this all into perspective for us. I asked him to sing tonight. He said he wasn't going to. I do want Wes Cunningham to say a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have anything to say. I was very honored to see the event, and I was not expecting to fight the emotions that I had up there. As I started singing, all of a sudden, they were standing. I haven't sung 30 seconds. And they're standing, the veterans are up there. Yeah, go, brother, and this and that. And I knew what was behind me. There were 58,000-plus names on that wall of veterans. And I kind of had to distance myself. All right, you're not standing here. You're not doing this. Look at the sky. Do something. But anyway, it was very emotional for me, and it's something that I'll always remember the rest of my life.
And John Foster, the man in the red coat, you know, he -- I can't say enough about what he coordinated and put together to make this event come together. And so he's a man of service. He is a veteran that should be honored for his service as a veteran. But he also has a servant heart and a love for Harrisonville that surpasses everyone. So I'm going to give John the microphone.
Now I'm emotional. I -- it was an honor to be a part of that. My years of service was '55 through '63. And we were told we were Cold War veterans because we had a police action and then a conflict. So I have not been active in any veterans' organization, and I was asked to put together the foundation and the walk and the plans for the site. And I'd done that on the third day of January. And we were blessed. On the third day of July, it was all over with, and the grounds were policed up. And we felt like we loved that site better than we found it. And that's the military spirit.
Yes, it is.
You can dip-wack somewhere, and when you pick up, you need to leave it better than you found it. And I felt good about that.
Thank you, John. Well, the city always cherishes its relationship with the chamber. The city and the chamber work hand in glove for the good of the city of Harrisonville. And so we are honored tonight to have former Mayor Kevin Wood, who is the President of the Chamber Board, and Obie Carl, who is the Chief Executive Officer of the chamber, with us as well to receive this picture. I guess we're going to fight over who gets to -- who gets to post it. But I take first claim to it. So I want to give Kevin and Obie just a moment with the microphone.
Thank you, Judy. You know, the chamber was brought in basically because somebody had to raise a little money. And I'm really proud of the staff and the volunteers that worked on raising that money and all the, you know, kind of putting together a budget. And we had plenty. And it's kind of a unique story. One of my good friends lives in Belton. He's a patriot writer. He's done 31 walls. They escorted the wall in 31 places. He said, "When I walked into the meeting in Harrisonville, there was never a meeting that I walked into that was any better organized than it was in Harrisonville, and everything went down to a T that day, better than any other city I've been in. And you guys need to be proud of what you do in Harrisonville." And so I'm proud of everybody who worked on it. And I did, like I said, all I did was raise a little money. So, but thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kevin is too modest. He did much more than raise a little money. He put the chamber where it should be in supporting the wall and all that it means to all the veterans and also all the members of the community. And Kevin took the ball and put the chamber behind it. And we're all really proud of Kevin. We're proud of the city. We're proud of everybody that was involved in this.
And before I ask you to stand and give these folks their rightful salute, I would also mention there are two people who also played a real key part in this that are not with us this evening. One is Ed Roberts. Most of you know Ed. What you may not know is that Ed took a fall today and broke his hip. And so I would ask you to be praying for him and then reach out to him. You know what Ed means to us, and I know that he would love to hear from you. Steve Tiedemann is the other gentleman who played an integral part. It was his dream initially to bring the wall here. So I want to make sure to give them the appropriate recognition. So would you join me, please, in standing and honoring these men who stand before you? Did you get the pictures? John, can you get a picture before you sit down?
Yeah. Squeeze on in here. All right.
Come on in here, guys.
You guys get over there.
Jim, why don't you guys hold this?
Yeah.
Go ahead. There you go.
All right, everybody. Three, two, one, and another. Thank you.
And I'm going to put this over here for you all to see. It's quite lovely. Thank you.
Thanks for all you --
Okay. Public participation will continue. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board this evening? Please step forward. Seeing no one, I'll close. Oops. You got to ingest under the wire.
I know. I'll be really fast.
Say your name and address into the microphone, please.
Vanessa Harkgrave, 904 East Pearl Street, Harrisonville, Missouri. And I just wanted to say thank you for your consideration. I know that the Pearl Street closure for Halloween is going to be coming up next, if not soon. Just so you guys are aware, because I don't know if that was in the proposal, we have talked to -- we, several of the residents on the street, have been talking to each other. And everybody's been overwhelmingly on board because everybody's seen kids get overzealous and run out into the street. And there's so much traffic on it during Halloween. We want it to be a safe environment for the kids, and we think it'll be really fun for the community. So just thank you for, you know, the consideration of it. And thank you to Chief Hofer as well, because I know we've gone back and forth on coming up with a safer plan, so.
Thank you for your leadership, Vanessa. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board tonight? If not, now I will close public participation. I will move on to the approval of the minutes. First of all, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session of August the 19th.
Vote to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Milner to approve the minutes from the Work Session of August 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. Now the minutes of the Board of Aldermen the regular meeting, August the 19th of 2019.
Vote to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Reese to approve the meetings of the minutes of the regular meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those minutes stand approved. The minutes of the executive session from August the 5th, 2019.
Mayor, I'm going to --
Yes, Alderman?
I'm going to understand from that voting. I wasn't here.
Okay. Would you please record that Alderman Turner abstains?
I do the same as well.
Me too.
Okay. The three Aldermen abstain from voting on the executive session minutes. I need a motion.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. All in favor of approving the executive session minutes from August 5th?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those minutes stand approved. So as we move on to the agenda items, I would just ask you right now to please mute your cell phones if you haven't already done so. Good evening, Chief. Please speak into the microphones so Alderman Davidson can hear you.
Good evening, Mayor. Member of the Board of Aldermen for you tonight. The agenda items, first item is the trunk-or-treat special event permit. This is a joint venture between the Harrisonville Rotary and the Parks and Recreation Department. Been going on for many, many years. Very, very popular. This year's event will be on Sunday, October 27, from 2:00 p.m. until 5:00 p.m. We had no problems in the past. With this event, we recommend approval. entertain any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Turner to approve the special event permit for trunk-or-treat. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll grant that permit. Next is the Pearl Street Halloween Night Special Event Permit. Go ahead.
Yes, this is a new event this year by Vanessa Harkgrave. I forget her name. Vanessa Zorora. I've known her for many years.
I answered the --
The memo, and I apologize for that. But this is a new event. They're wanting to do Halloween Night. Halloween Night on Pearl Street is always very, very popular, very congested with traffic and vehicles and as well as pedestrians. So they're wanting to block off a section of Pearl Street. They requested Price Street through the square. We were actually requesting that they do Halsey Street so that there's another thoroughfare.
Thoroughfare.
On Pearl Street, between Halsey and Word Street, that would be 11 individual closures that the street department would have to close off. That will prevent any vehicle traffic from getting in there. Ms. Harkgrave has said that there are numerous neighbors involved. I think that's even grown since we spoke. We went back and forth with lots of emails to get this worked out. So we do see any problems with this year, and we're recommending approval. Ms. Harkgrave is there. If you have any questions for her, she's in the audience.
And I just wanted to make sure on this, we're taking the hay right out, correct? That was in there?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure. Any other questions of the chief or Ms. Harkgrave?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner and a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the special event permit for Pearl Street Halloween. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on, Council Bill 57.
Council Bill 57, a resolution for the employment of Michael Tholen as interim city administrator for the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, for the period beginning August 7, 2019 until December 31, 2019.
Okay. You all know that Mike Tholen has come on to help us during the transition time based on the resignation of Happy Welch. So this is an official resolution to approve his employment with the city to begin August 7th through December 31st, 2019. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Speak into your microphone, please.
The last time we hired Mr. Tholen to be our interim city administrator, we all sat down at the police station and took a vote to, and then interviewed him to hire him. This time, that did not happen.
You're having that vote tonight.
Well, okay, then, I'm sure he's been paid since he came on board at that career.
That's correct.
Then who authorized his payment from then till now? Because you can't do it, and with the lack of a city administrator, the board has to approve his salary from then till now, and that hasn't been done.
So when you chose to walk out of the executive session, you were...
I didn't go in.
You were not able to hear the discussion that took place in the executive session. You actually could have voted against going in and still go in where you could have heard the discussion.
Okay. But I also called you before the meeting and asked you on my phone call, what was to be discussed in the executive session? And you denied telling me the first time, and then you called me back and said it was something about employees and I can't remember, but Mr. Tholen's name was not mentioned to me on the phone at that time with our conversation. So I had no idea that we were, that you were going to okay hiring him inside that executive session, nor could I get the information of what it was, the straight information of what we were going back there in the executive session to meet, since I couldn't get it from Happy Welch. And so then I called you, and you refused to give me that information. In fact, you told me first that you couldn't discuss it. And so I had no other alternative, since I told you then that if it wasn't of importance, I wouldn't attend. And so now, my question is, there's no one that can authorize payment to him except the Board of Aldermen, and we've had one meeting since he was, has been put into office, and there was no mention of wages or voting to put him on. And so I'd like to know why this has been, has taken so long, and why, since I didn't want to go into closed sessions, since I didn't like the things that were discussed after I found out, should I support this?
Are you finished?
Yep.
Okay. Then I'll respond. The first time when you called me and you asked me about executive session, I did not deny you the information. I told you I could not give you the information, and that was because there was someone else in the room with me, and what I was going to share would have been confidential information. That's why I called you back when I was in a private place, and then I answered your question.
Yeah, but you didn't reveal about his hiring.
I told you the discussion was going to be about Happy Welch's benefits, didn't I?
Yeah, it was something about...
That's correct.
And I didn't know, I knew you said it was employee-related.
That's correct.
And you did say Happy.
That's correct. And the fact of the matter is that any of you who were here could have voted against going into executive session, still have attended executive sessions, so you could have heard the discussion, but you chose not to do that. You chose to walk out instead.
Yes, that's right. I didn't feel it was going to be discussed or something I wanted to be in on.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve the hiring of Michael Tholen as interim city administrator. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll show hands, please. So those in favor of hiring Michael Tholen as interim city administrator, please raise your hand. Okay, so we have four, five votes in favor. That would be Alderman Dorhoff, Davidson, Milner, Reese, and Turner. And those opposed to hiring, that would be two. So that resolution passes and becomes Resolution 036. Council Bill 58.
Council Bill 58, a resolution changing the policy for municipal candidate election filing pursuant to Section 115.124.2, RSMO, and establishing an effective date.
So you remember, we discussed this in a work session a few weeks ago, that we wanted to now, in advance of the April elections, be able to establish what process we would follow for candidate filing. And in the discussion, I think it was unanimous that you wanted to have a lottery system. So this is just a resolution making that part of the record.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Reese. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That resolution is approved and becomes Resolution 037. Council Bill 59.
Council Bill 59, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to sponsor transfer of $304,938 in unobligated non-primary entitlement grant funds to the Missouri Department of Transportation and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Patterson?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. This, with our airport, we get entitlement funds every year from the federal government through MoDOT. We're able to save them like for three years, and if we don't use them within three years, then they go back to the federal government. Well, this will stop them from going to the federal government. It will take approximately three years worth that we will not be able to use and we could not use. And instead of going back to the federal government, it will be sent to MoDOT to distribute amongst other Missouri airports. We've done this a couple of times in the past. It keeps us in real good standing with MoDOT, so we would recommend doing that again.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add, Mike?
Just that the funds that we haven't used are because the first smaller amount, the $4,938, is just a project that came in under what our anticipated costs were, and so since they had granted us the authority for a certain amount of money and it came in less than that, that unused spending authority reverts back to the state. We never actually had received the money because it would have been reimbursement for expenses, so we're not sending them a check. We're just releasing the obligation of that fund to it.
Correct. We're releasing the entitlement.
Yeah. The other two, or the other amount is the $300,000, and that's basically money that at $150,000 a year over a couple of years, but we're still preserving our relationship with the aviation department because we have, there are some more expensive, if you're talking about runway improvements or repaving, that's going to be a more expensive multi-year project. And so by giving this money, this spending authority back to the MoDOT, where they can shift that around to some other airport in the state, when it comes our turn for runway improvements, we'd look to be a better...
We hope they shift the money to us.
Yes.
So we wouldn't be able to use this money next year for any kind of runway improvements?
No, we have, it's not going to be enough. And so the authority's going to expire one way or the other, and if we do nothing and wait longer, it'll expire and revert to the feds, and they can appropriate it to some other state. If we do it now, it reverts to the state and they can appropriate it somewhere within our state system.
Any further questions or discussion on this matter?
I make a motion to approve, Council Bill 59.
Second.
How about this is getting read? This is going to read to the ordinance.
So is your motion...
Oh, to pass it to a second reading, sorry.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Miller to advance Council Bill 59 to a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bockelman, absent. Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Second reading.
Council Bill 59, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen authorizing the city administrator to sponsor transfer of $304,938 in unobligated non-primary entitlement grant funds to the Missouri Department of Transportation and establishing an effective date.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Bockelman is absent, and Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 59 passes and becomes Ordinance 3476. Council Bill 60.
Thank you.
Council Bill 60, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for the 2019 street striping program from KNG Striping in the amount of $28,131.50 and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. This is the last stage of our asphalt program, this will include Commercial Street, among several others. I think there's a map in your packet that shows. This program is slightly bigger than what we normally do. We only have the two, the two companies bidding it. We are recommending that KNG be given the contract with the additional striping, so there'd be a base bid and then additional striping. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have.
How often do we do this?
It's actually been a couple of years, three years, since we've done it. It's something we used to do Commercial Street every year, and then it's just gotten so expensive and...
What was the budgeted amount?
It wasn't a budgeted amount. It was all part of the asphalt overlay. It was budgeted, but it was mixed in, but it was risky, yeah.
So does it typically last for three years, Rodney?
Mayor, you can see right now, they're fading pretty bad.
Yes, they are.
And with the cost of it, we try to make do the...
I understand.
...three years.
Yeah, they need to be done, that's for sure. Any other questions for Rodney or for Eric?
Make a motion to approve, Council Bill 60.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve Council Bill 60. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 60 is approved and becomes Resolution R 038. Item number G, is that still you, Mr. Patterson?
It is.
The RRFB flashers agreement.
This is an agreement with MoDOT to put up, I'm sure everyone's noticed, the flashers on Commercial, on the Mechanic Street. Well, now that we've got those in, MoDOT has decided they would like us to fill out an application to have those installed. So what you have in front of you is an application to have those installed retroactively, but then also to add two more on Two Highway. So I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have about those.
And the chief is here too, if you have questions of the chief or Mr. Patterson. They're both available for you.
You said add two more?
Use your microphone, please.
Okay. Two more?
Yes. One at Elm, I'm sorry, Eastwood and Two Highway, and Bird and Two Highway, correct?
It's just Bird.
We have one at Eastwood and Two Highway.
Oh, with Bird, okay. So, yeah. It is.
Just two and Bird?
Yes, that's right. Oh, it's each and a Bird.
So just...
Yeah, the two on Bird.
It's just one crosswalk flasher at Bird and Two Highway.
Right.
You want on each side, but it's a total of one crosswalk flasher.
Oh, yeah, one crosswalk, I bet, because they're...
They're two separate, connected.
Okay. So it counts as two, but it's one in each direction. Okay. I figured one would be one.
Any other questions? So all in favor of approving this agreement? We don't need a motion, it's not a resolution, so just everybody's in favor.
Aye.
Okay. All right, there you go, Mr. Patterson.
Thank you.
Now do that retroactive agreement.
We'll get that.
We'll move on to Council Bill 61.
Council Bill 61, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, to authorize the city administrator to execute a contract for the 2019 sludge hauling with Denali Water Solutions LLC in the amount of $150,000 and establishing an effective date.
This is, again, part of this is what we do yearly from the wastewater plant. We have the lagoon there that after everything gets processed, it goes there, and what comes out is actually good for farm ground. In general, we spend about $75,000 a year doing that. The other half of this is the water plant. The water plant, we do about every three to five years, and it just happens to be the time to do it. They've both been budgeted at $75,000 apiece, and we won't know an exact figure until they're done because they, we pay them by the gallon, but it's an amount not to exceed $150,000 for both. Whether you care, I don't know, but the water plant, there's really nothing good or bad with it, so. It doesn't say the amount not to exceed.
Right.
But that's what our full budget is, so we can't...
Okay. I was just getting clarification from the entry. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve, Council Bill 61.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson with a second from Alderman Milner to approve Council Bill 61. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 61 is approved and becomes Resolution R 039. Council Bill 62.
Council Bill 62, a resolution of the Harrisonville, Missouri Board of Aldermen authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources State Revolving Fund Program for loans under the Missouri Safe Drinking Water Law, Section 640, RSMO.
As some of you'll remember, when we started construction, or started our loan process for the water plant, we had to enter into the same agreement at that time, which then it was under Mayor Hassick and Happy Welch. Neither one of those are with us anymore. There's still paperwork to be signed, and so this is just designating our new representatives, Mayor Bowman and city administrator Mike Tholen. So a little more cleanup.
Any questions of Mr. Patterson? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. I'm going to move through. I have a motion from Alderman Reese with a second from Alderman Dorhoff to approve Council Bill 62. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 62 is approved and becomes Resolution 040. You can sit down, man. Mr. Crowe?
This ordinance comes to you regarding accessory buildings from the planning commission, who recommends approval of it with a 4-3 vote. The ordinance pulls together a number of requirements on accessory buildings from different parts of the code and puts them all in one place. We get a lot of inquiries about accessory buildings. I think we've authorized 16 over the past, over the past year and a half. We've had code, we've had issues with sometimes building, or houses, accessory buildings being built on quarter lots too close to the street. On a quarter lot, they're supposed to be as far back as the house. We've also had issues with some of the, in some of the zoning districts, it's not clear whether or not accessory buildings were allowed. We've allowed them because it wouldn't make sense not to, like accessory, like in the ag zoning districts and the industrial zoning districts, and so we've approved them, but the ordinance weren't clear that you could do accessory buildings in those districts. So we've made, we've made some changes to clarify that. The third item that probably got the most discussion was, we had a conflict that we realized, just caught it this past year, that's going back to 2011. In our code, the code states that you're allowed accessory buildings just in the rear yard. Past practice and an informational brochure that's handed out says that it is allowed in the rear and side yards, and that's been the past practice going back, as far as I can tell, to about 2011. So what we're proposing is that, and what we proposed in the ordinance, is that we follow the past practice, which would be allow accessory buildings in the side yard behind the front building line. We had some differences of opinion on that. We had one member that voted against the ordinance because he was not in favor of accessory buildings in the side yard. We talked about whether or not the maximum size of accessory buildings that you can have, whether or not it should be a smaller number than what it is, and there were some people that wanted to take another month and take a look at that. And so for that reason, they voted against moving the ordinance on to you all, but the four that voted in... But the four that voted in favor of it didn't feel like we needed to be more restrictive. They were comfortable with accessory buildings in the side yard. And so it comes to you with a 4-3 vote. Be happy to answer any questions, and this is a public hearing.
Question. So this is only practice, this is not what the actual ordinance says?
Correct.
Or the code says?
It's now recommending that we make the practice for the last eight or nine years code. The code says accessory buildings are only allowed in the rear yard. The practice has been that they've been allowed in the rear and side yards. And we're recommending that we go with the practice.
Why, and I'm curious as to why we would not follow our code?
Well, I don't know, I think, I don't know why it wasn't followed going all the way back to 2011. That's why I can't answer that question. I do think by pulling all of this together into one place in the code, it'll be easier for us to administer and it'll be easier for residents and applicants to understand. The reason that we recommended allowing them in the side yard is, one, we've been, the city's been allowing that, and we haven't seen problems with that.
So you're telling us that we've been allowing it in the side yard, but the code says we shouldn't?
Right, right. We did have an informational flyer that's been passed out since 2011 that said that it was allowed in both the side and the rear yards. And that's what the practice has been.
I know it was somewhere in there that we allowed RVs to be parked on the side, in the side yard if it was a gravel spot.
Let's try to keep this simple tonight.
Okay. I didn't know about building that. So is this to the advantage of the property owners?
I would think that it gives them more flexibility and choice.
But do we want them in the side yard? I mean, what are their neighbors gonna, how exciting is that gonna be?
I just, my thing is, if we're already doing it since '11...
But it's not code.
I know, but I mean, we've been letting them do it.
Well, that doesn't mean that's right.
No, no, I know, but I mean, everything that's already done is already grandfathered in.
Well, yes, but moving forward...
Roger, just to give you a point of comparison, Belton and Hugier and Raymore are allowed it in the side yards as long as they're behind the front building line of the house, which is what we're proposing.
Well, that makes sense to somebody a lot.
Mr. Crowe, would you use your microphone when you speak, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
That would make sense to me if someone had a driveway and they wanted to enclose and make a garage. Instead of having a carport, they wanted to make an enclosed garage by the side of their house. I would think that would be a good idea. Oh, I'm sorry.
But we're not talking about a garage, we're talking about shit.
We're talking about accessory buildings. It could be detached, right? It could be.
Could be either one, yes.
It could be a garage. I'm seeing anything wrong with that.
Are they all detached?
Yes.
So Mr. Tholen, you had something to comment?
I was just gonna ask, Roger, do you have, are there other restrictions other than just a detached building size, setback from the side yard, other things that apply so it's not going to be just a blanket allowing, they still have to meet other criteria?
Yeah. On interior lots, yes. Interior lots, you have to be eight foot from the side property line. On corner lots, you have to be 20 feet from the street, which is the same distance a house has to be from the street. The size requirement, and this was another item that we talked about, right now our size requirement is you can add up the perimeter of every building on the lot, and the total has to be less than 35% of the lot size. That is our size limitation. After the planning, this came up at the Planning Commission meeting, and so since then, I've looked at it. And it looks like to me, I mean, 35% is a pretty generous size that most people don't seem to take advantage of. I've got about 16 permits that we've issued over the last year and a half. Most people are building far less than what they would be allowed to.
Okay, I have one more question, because now I'm confused. We had an issue not very long ago in, at the ranch. And they were instructed that that had to be moved to the back.
Correct.
And yet now we're saying, oh wait, no, you don't have to, now that you've gone to the expense of putting it up on cinder blocks and sitting all willy-nilly on their lot, looking horrible, and I'm sure they're not thrilled with it, but now we're going to say, okay, wait, no, you can?
We did that because we felt, and you may not agree with this, but we felt that the code trumped. I mean, we read it.
Which it should.
We felt like, yeah, we felt like it incorrectly administered, and we said, we've got to go with the code. But, you know, now we're coming to you with legislation, and we are recommending the other way.
This comes with the planning and zoning approval?
4-3.
Yes.
So they can have a detached structure, eight feet from a property line?
From their neighbors.
From their neighbors' property line?
Yeah. That's, you see that in most communities, something seven and a half. One of the three that I looked at here in Kappa County was five feet.
So up to 35% from their property, eight feet from the property line?
Yes. But like I said, most people probably can't afford to build that much accessory building house.
It's still legally allowed to.
That's right. Out of the 16 that I looked at, we've had probably two or three that came close to that. The rest haven't come anywhere close to building as much as the...
Alderman?
Is there, I didn't say, is there anything on the sideline that says it can be past the house or before the house, I guess?
If the house is set back farther than the building line, and a lot of times you see this on large one and two acre tracts.
Right.
You can put, I mean, right now you can't. You can't put the garage in front of the house because it says rear yard.
Right. But I mean, if we change it to side, side of the rear?
If we change it to the side yard, you could. And I guess that is to clarify that, I guess if the house is set back farther than the front building line, yes, that would be an example where you could put it in front of the house, but it still had to be behind the front building line. Thank you.
So like if the house is 50 foot back, you could put this 20 feet back, and so you gotta shed in front of the house?
Yeah.
On the side. But where do we determine front yard and side yard? I mean, how do we?
The code determines it. You know, it's in the zoning ordinance. Front yard setback for R1, it's 30, 35 feet. And the side yard is just, it's behind the front building line of the house on the side.
Okay, so then the front yard, if it's 30 or 35 feet, that means the shed can't be closer than 30, 35 feet off line, and the ordinance says 20.
That 20 is a, that 20 is a side yard setback for corner lots, yeah. The side yard setback is eight feet normally, but it's 20 feet if you're on a corner lot for side distance purposes.
All right, we're in a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I...
I have one more question.
I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, if we determine that we're going to keep it the way it is, are those buildings that are already built going to be grandfathered in? I mean, we're not trying to run around and make people move their buildings, are we?
I would propose that we, that's bygone days.
Okay.
Alderman Milner?
At my recommendation.
Remind me, did we not discuss this last year about containers and other things having to be behind buildings or behind homes? What was that? Is that not this?
That was part of this, but it's not quite the same, right?
Well, this is, that was just on the commercial. That was just on the commercial.
Still detached structure?
Commercial lots.
Are those residential?
Commercial, commercial.
It was just commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. It was just events center and chamber.
That was when we had the storage container there on the back events.
But that will stay the same, then, is that correct?
Oh, yes.
Correct.
This is just residential, right?
But at that time, which was October 2018, there was discussion about it being in the rear yards only, because that was the code. Is there anyone else that would like to address during this public hearing on this matter? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain a motion. Or you can go ahead and read, I'm sorry.
Council Bill number 63, an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri repealing Section 405.550 Accessory Uses D Detached Accessory Buildings of the Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 405.550 Accessory Uses D Detached Accessory Buildings.
So to clarify, if you vote in favor of this ordinance, you are voting to allow accessory buildings in side yards. If you vote against it, you are voting to keep the code as it is with accessory buildings restricted to rear yards. Correct? I just need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move Council Bill number 63 to a second reading.
I think Alderman Turner was in there. Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dickerson to advance Council Bill 63 to a second reading. Roll call.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Are we voting to advance?
To advance. Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman is absent. Alderman Reese?
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson?
Second reading.
Council Bill number 63, an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri repealing Section 405.550 Accessory Uses D Detached Accessory Buildings of this Harrisonville City Code of Ordinances and enacting in lieu thereof a new Section 405.550 Accessory Uses D Detached Accessory Buildings.
Roll call.
Alderman Bachman is absent. Alderman Reese?
No.
Alderman Dorhoff?
No.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
No.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
And Alderman Davidson?
Moving on to Council Bill 64.
Council Bill 64, a resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri to authorize the city administrator to execute a purchase agreement for two patrol vehicles from Lou Fues Automotive Network in the amount of $70,089 and establishing an effective date.
Good evening, and Mayor, and members of the board. Before you is our purchase of two patrol vehicles for the police department. 2019 City of Harrisonville annual budget has $77,950 to purchase two replacement patrol vehicles as well as the necessary equipment for that. In 2019, the state of Missouri awarded the estate contract to Lou Fues Fords of Chesterfield. We are using the estate contract to purchase one 2024 Ford Police Interceptor for $35,457 and one 2024 Ford Police Interceptor F-150 for $34,632. We are recommending approval for, to purchase these two vehicles on the Missouri state bid for the amount of $70,089. And that's it. Entertain any questions.
Is this a legacy item?
Yes.
Why have we waited so long for these police cars?
Because we weren't in need yet. We're still trying to use up our Crown Vics. We have two Crown Vics. If you remember the spreadsheet I gave you last month when we talked about the radiuses, we are trying to use up our Crown Vics and waited more for the need rather than just let them sit here.
Any other questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner to approve Council Bill 64. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Council Bill 64 is approved and becomes Resolution 041. Council Bill 56.
Council Bill 56, second reading. An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of Harrisonville, Missouri repealing Chapter 430 of the City Code and enacting in lieu thereof an amended Chapter 430 Urban Redevelopment Regulations of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri and establishing an effective date.
This is a second reading. Roll call, please.
Alderman Doroff?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Nay.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman, absent. Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nay.
And Alderman Davidson?
Thank you. Council Bill 56 is, the second reading is approved and becomes ordinance 3477. Excuse me, Alderman? Do you have a question?
Is the same as what we had before?
Yes, this was a second reading. Right, we did it at our last meeting, correct. Alderman and committee reports. Alderman Dorhoff?
Just wanted to say we had a good turnout at the town hall last Saturday and learned about Cass Career Center. So it was a great guest speaker that we had. And the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting we had a couple weeks ago, they're tidying the Fall Festival. It used to be the Park District Festival, now it's a Hall Cabin Festival again, October 4th or 5th. So welcome everybody to come out and show their support.
Thank you. Alderman Milner?
I would just like to say that I'm a little disappointed with some of our aldermen. A comment was made that going into executive session was not important enough. And having sat through multiple years of being an alderman, I find it a little disturbing that there's any part of this that we don't feel is a necessary or viable thing. And just because we don't like it doesn't mean we shouldn't sit here and do our job. So I hope moving forward that we all think about making sure we're up here to do the right thing and doing our job that we were elected to do.
I would have been raised.
We just returned from the MML conference in St. Charles, and while we all look forward going, it's a lot of work up there. And we sit in sessions that sometimes are super interesting and sometimes are just a bunch of marketing, you know? But the thing that we learned is that Harrisonville is not unique in its problems and its strengths and its weaknesses. And after I come back to one of those conferences, I'm so proud of Harrisonville. We have our problems, but boy, do we have our strengths. I'm personally real excited about the dog parks that we're getting ready to work on, Chris. Good for you. And I think the thing that I particularly liked about, and I look back on when we were working to get the dog for the police department, is that citizens come forward and they show us the strength, and that's what Harrisonville is built on. It's not us sitting up here, it's you sitting out there. And just want you to know that we're real proud of being a part of this. Thank you.
Alderman Miller?
I have a report for the park board meeting last week. The sidewalk project is now complete in front of the community center. We used some leftover rock that's put in landscape beds and parking lot islands. And on behalf of Chris Deal and the park board and myself, I want to say a big thank you to Harrisonville Rotary Club, as they replanted the area around the Spencer Litten Liebman statue out in front of the community center. They did a great job, looks beautiful, we appreciate that very much. Lake weed removal process is continuing, it was good results at the city park. That process will continue throughout the fall, and we'll keep you updated on how this progresses throughout the winter. The outdoor pool facility, we finished up another season. We were very lucky, this year we had a lot of damage from last winter. We found a new patching material that appears to... We found a new patching material that appears to work extremely well. So we got through this year with no major issues of any kind. And the attendance was down this year because of the weather and the rain and cruel weather, but overall, we got through the year very well with that. Speaking of the dog park project, we had the doggy dives the day after Labor Day at the swimming pool. There was approximately 50 dogs that came out with their owners and raised over $600 for the project, so we're very pleased with that. And the staff is still working on the 2020 budget till probably come before us next month. That's all I got.
Thank you. Alderman Dickerson?
I also attended the meeting, and I'd like to thank the city for always making it a good event for us to go. And I did enjoy it, and I learned as much as I could while I was there. And I would also like to say that I'm disappointed in the lack of transparency on several subjects that were held in closed session. It's not a lack of duty, because I've been doing it a long time, but when I can't get the correct information to go into it, to know what I'm going in there for, I, it's something that I don't want to participate in. And if people can't understand it, I'm sorry, that's their fault, not mine. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Alderman Davidson?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was unable to attend the Saturday youth program. I believe, Mayor, you were there. It's likely it was quite a, a very good turnout, law enforcement there at the football stadium. And I was excited to see as big a turnout as there was for the thin blue line. So that's one thing that I would, you can probably comment a little bit more on it, but I wish I could have been there, but I was unable to attend.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
I also went to the MML conference. I took a lot of interesting classes, learned a lot of stuff. There's a big deal, there's a ton of stuff to learn, and how everything evolves and changes and the little changes that we have seen with it. Overall, it was great.
Thank you. I also was at the MML conference, and I think the one thing that meant the most to me was being part of a mayor's group. The mayors in the Kansas City metro area and the mayors across the state of Missouri are coming together to have one unified voice to take it to Jefferson City. We need to communicate to our legislators in Jefferson City what we as cities need. And I am pleased that instead of just one or two mayors going to Jefferson City to visit with a representative, we now have a group of some 300 mayors who are going to come together with one unified voice, talking about the things that we need as cities. Some of the topics that were discussed was, is the Wayfair decision about use tax and taxing online sales. There was some discussion about the addiction to vaping that's going on. There was discussion about gun violence and just some things that cities need to come together. It's time that we come together with a unified voice, and so I am proud to be a part of that. As Alderman Davidson mentioned, I was able to attend the Wildcat, the fourth grade Wildcat football game Saturday morning and to see and to share some time with some of the law enforcement officers that came from far away to honor the kids who had chosen to, in their design of their new jerseys this year, to add the thin blue line to show their support of the police department. So police departments and sheriff's agencies from all over came to show their support of those kids. So it was, it was quite, quite an event Saturday morning, and I was very honored to be a part of it. The other thing that, that I would say before I turn this over to Mr. Tholen is I'm going to pass out copies of a city administrator recruitment profile. And I'm going to ask the aldermen to review this and to return it to Mike or myself by the 23rd of September. Alderman Davidson, I will email yours to you. I think it's important, a couple of things are important here. I think it's important that stakeholders in the community have the opportunity to have a voice. And so I'm going to ask the aldermen to be discussing with stakeholders in the community and your constituents, what would you like to see in the next city administrator? I've asked Mr. Tholen to mention to the department heads tomorrow morning, I'd like for you to solicit feedback from your staff. I think it's important that everyone that has the vested interest in our next city administrator has the opportunity to voice their opinion and what they think is important. So please review this recruitment profile. We will come back together. You're talking about transparency. You will see that this board will come together and have the opportunity to interview the candidates and will have input into whom we hire. So please review this, return it to us by the 23rd of September, and be talking to your constituents and other stakeholders out in the community, department heads that are in the room. Please be speaking to your employees. We'd like to know what's important to people as we go out and search for our next city administrator. And speaking of city administrator, I'll now turn it over to our city administrator, Mr. Tholen.
Thank you. One of the things that we've been working on here at the staff level, Alderman Milner brought up in the park board report, is our budget process. One of the areas that we got some guidance on earlier tonight when we had the work session was when we're talking about what kind of rates we are going to have to be looking at. And so there's a lot of things that go into that budget. I want to assure you that the staff is working pretty hard on, on trying to put it all together. And also assure you that there won't be enough to do everything that wants to be done, needs to be done in our community, but we'll be bringing to you our recommended priorities for operations for next year in that budget process. I also appreciate the opportunity to come back and pitch in a little bit here. In Harrisonville, I've worked here for a number of years, and the community's been very good to me, and so the opportunity to kind of help out some of this goes both ways. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And you have the municipal court report in your packet. Questions from the media?
No.
No questions?
I'm making a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to RSMO 610.021 to leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate.
Thank you. We're adjourned to executive session, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. It's been a long night. All right, I have, I have a motion to move to executive session. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we're adjourned to executive session.
Roll call.
Yes, it is. Thank you all. Okay, but it's straight. Roll call, please.
Alderman Bachman absent. Alderman Dorha?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
We are adjourned to executive session, and we're going to allow Mr. Smith a few moments to move the video monitor to the conference room for that executive session. Thank you.